All right, it is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we are being recorded. So this is the regular city council meeting from Minutrista for February 22nd, 2022. Our first order of business, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm gonna start out with some introductions and also a friendly reminder if you have electronic devices, phones, et cetera, please put them on airplane mode or on silent so they don't disrupt the meeting here. Introductions, I'm gonna start on my, my right way at the end. We have Lieutenant Craig Squires, he's filling in for our chief of police as he is at the academy for a while, at the FBI academy. Then we have with us this evening, with Kennedy Engraving, our attorney, Ron Beatty. Welcome back, Mr. Beatty. And then we have our community development director, David Abel. And Brian Grimm is our finance director. And next to me is Ally Paul Foose, she is our director of administration. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor. And council members present this evening are Pam Mortensen, John Chamberlain, Anne McGregor, and Kathleen Refkin. And then also on the end, we have our city engineer with us, Adam Gepois, sitting also in for Allison Fausky. We have our public work superintendent, Gary Peters. And behind them, we have our city clerk, Don Matzko. And then also this evening, also with WSB and part of our WSB water engineering team, we have Greg Johnson. And also in, joining us this evening, we have some people from SEH, also water guru. So, we will have a lot of water discussion this evening as well. With that, I have a small change to our agenda and we will be removing, under special presentations, number eight, what I'd like to suggest, if council is okay with this, is I'd like to move these types of informal presentations of new employees, maybe to work sessions. That way, the people don't have to come back at seven o'clock, they can maybe just stay a little bit later. So I'd like to ask that we move this to our work session as the first item, March 7th. And then we can put names and faces together. I don't have no other changes, are there any other additions or changes? With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, five oh, and that was Ms. McGregor that seconded that. So we'll move on to our special presentations. We have several engineers with us from SEH and they are going to be talking to us about our water treatment plant. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us.
Madam Mayor, I'll start off if it's all right. You know, as you know, the issue we've had with the water treatment plant, especially the south, is that it is not operative, it can operate at full capacity, but we lose water quality. So we contacted SEH to have them come out and review the design and the construction and see what can happen or what can take place to make that plant operate at peak efficiency. They came out and Tom Thome and Brad Weiss came out, worked with Mike Pollak out in the plants, did some core sampling, and they'll discuss all this in there. It's all, you know, I'm sure you've all read this, I'll make it really quick and short. We have lost media, filter media, in the, in the filter chambers, which is common, you know, due to the, due to backwash. We've also looked at how we can save water during the backwash cycle and also extending our times between backwash, which they will all kind of go over everything and have a chance to answer your questions as, as well. So I believe Brad does have a presentation to kind of show you what they've determined, what they found, and they can go over that and talk about the report and answer any questions that you can, that you'll have.
Thank you, Mr. Peters, and welcome, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, folks, for having me. So, let me tell you, Superintendent Peters has gone home as well. So, the presentation I put together is just to quick summarize the memo that we had submitted. I won't get too deep in anything, if you have questions, feel free to ask them. So, a quick background, so two plants were constructed in about five, six years ago. So the north plant was put online in 2016, has a capacity of 750 gallons per minute. That was December of 2016 or so that it went online. The south plant went online January or so of 2017, that has a little larger capacity of 1,000 gallons per minute. So in December 2021, we received a letter that told us about some operational challenges that were happening, primarily at the south plant. So, John and I went out and performed a filter evaluation at the south plant. And then we submitted two different memos. So one kind of addressed the comments of this initial letter and then we sat down and said, "Okay, what can we do differently at these two plants to get a little better runtime, a little better operation with each of these plants?" So that letter is in our packet, we need packets. And I'll just kind of summarize, put four items that we discussed. So, the first piece, John went out and did a bed and core. So the filters are two different layers, the media, manganese green sand with anthracite on top of it. So the green sand was designed to be eighteen inches in depth, so we found that to be right where it should be. Eighteen inches is out there right now. And the anthracite is where one of the issues that we found, it's designed to have 12 inches of anthracite sitting on top of that green sand, then there was five to eight inches remaining. So that's kind of a normal course that happens throughout backwash. And you, you lose the anthracite throughout the course of your whole life. So, added in that anthracite, that's a recommended improvement that will help with filter operation. We looked at the backwash rates, and so the filters were designed for five and fifteen. We found them to be at six GPM per square foot during the air wash and sixteen GPM during the high rate wash. So the filters have a combined air-water wash, which gives a really vigorous explosion to your media, kind of frees everything up and lets you wash the gunk up during your, during your wash. We proposed to reduce that to three GPM during your air-water combined wash and ten GPM during the high rate wash. This provides some water savings, about a thousand dollars per week, it's a little over that from what we calculated. In order to provide these, this water reduction, the existing valves and actuators can be modified to have an adjustable stop hole put in on them. So, the water savings that will be calculated, so it's really in a reduction of water that's being used to backwash the filters. So, at the south plant, has a larger capacity, there's more filter cells that need to be backwashed. So one backwash is about 32,000 gallons. At the north plant, it's about 16,000 gallons to backwash all your filters. The filters are backwashed six to seven times per week. So, with a, pardon me, this is the reduction in, 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 in water. That's that third line on, on the chart there, reduction per week of 190,000 gallons at the south plant to 95,000 gallons at the north plant. If you look at the existing rates structure that's out there, the lowest tier on the residential tier structure is about 397 per thousand gallons. So if you just kind of work the way through the numbers, it's a little over a thousand gallons per week in savings, despite using less water to still get a, an efficient clean of the filters. The third recommendation is backwash optimization. So currently, in their existing configuration, both filters, each plant has two filters. Both filters need to come offline to run a backwash process, there's no way to separate the two filters. Through the addition of two valves at the south plant and some, some actuators at the, at the north plant, these filters can be separated, allowing one filter to remain online while the other filter is backwashing. And what this really does is during peak demand, when it's really hot in summer and everyone's watering their grass, operators noted that it's difficult to maintain water levels in the towers, right, with the shutdown of our filters every day to do a backwash. So if we can have one filter online while the other filter is backwashing, it kind of evens itself out, that filter that's online is creating water to backwash the second filter. So that doesn't result in, it's kind of a net, you know, neutral in the backwashing scheme. The fourth piece that we looked at is a filter runtime evaluation. So these filters, operators reported that you get about 14 hours of runtime. You can run water through them about 14 hours before you need to backwash them. And that tradeoff for backwashing is due to the iron and magnesium breaking through the water and resulting in some color in that finished water. So the filter, so the, well, I guess not, just the filter, the whole plant process, as the water comes in, it goes through an aerator, sits in an detention tank, and then it goes to the filters. So adding in a filtered polymer can help, some of those particles combine and create bigger particles that can be more easily filtered and give some longer runtime, so you won't get that break through the small iron and magnesium particles going through, pardon, through. So the addition of polymer feeds at both plants was recommended. A quick cost breakdown, these are, these are material costs here. So, 4,300, 4,400 in media between all filters at the plant, that's a total number. Backwash rate reduction, about a thousand dollars, that just kind of gets the, the actuators to be modified to get these, this adjustable stop hole to reduce the amount of water that goes through the filters. Backwash sequence optimization, this, this 16,000 dollars gets thousands of actuators, some electrical and the control piece that's needed to separate the two filters at each plant, allow one filter to remain online while the other one is offline. And then the runtime optimization, that would be around $9,000, about 4,500 per plant to install a polymer feed system at each plant. So based on these, these optimizations, if all four were implemented, it's about a very long week payback period, that's kind of based on that a thousand dollar per week savings that'll be identified. That was it, that kind of summarized the memo, so now I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Whelan.
Thank you. So, it came online in November, the first one in March of 2017, the second one. Couple of questions, since we don't really, we don't pay for the water that we pump and that we filter, we're really not saving that money, we're saving water, which of course is a good thing, but we're not really saving the money, so how do you equate that?
So, council member, or, Mayor Whelan, so there's... The reduction in the water, the, the largest cost at a water plant is getting the water out of the ground and treating that water, so the least amount of water that can be wasted is a cost savings to the city. So ultimately, this backwash wastewater goes to a tank, and there's a reclaim process and then we try and reclaim, you know, as much as possible, take that water, let it settle out, let the solids that we backwash out, let those settle to the bottom, and then reclaim as much of that water at the top that we can. The rest of it gets sent away. So, so there is some level of optimization, some level of savings in the fact that we're not taking water, that we're not wasting as much water, we're able to maximize the use of water that is already pulled out of the ground and send as much out into the distribution system for customers versus plant processes.
Okay, so you're saying you're, we're capturing about 1,000 gallons a minute that we can now be selling versus dumping, okay, got it. Then just tell me real quick, polymer feeds, I'm assuming the polymer is then filtered out before it goes into the system?
Yeah, Mayor Whelan, so the polymer becomes, it, it becomes, you know, it binds these particles, right? Those particles then get filtered out, so it's no, there's no added taste or odor or anything like that, breaks through the filters.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure we're not sending water out that people are drinking polymers.
No, Mayor, it's a very common process to feed a polymer at groundwater in certain water plants like this, groundwater like this in certain water plants across the country.
Okay.
Why weren't these valves installed originally on the treatment plant?
So, Mayor, council members, it's not atypical for a water plant to shut down both filters to run a backwash. I wasn't a part of the design, our design engineers since left SEH. I don't exactly know that, but I can say it's not atypical for water plants to do this. It's a, it's a common practice. This here presents a, an optimization or an improvement on a design that's been working, like Superintendent Peters said, it's been working, but these are ways to improve the operations. I don't think that's a direct answer, I don't, I don't, I don't truthfully know.
Okay. Is it more expensive to put them in now than had they been installed when it was made?
Mayor, council member, it's, either way, it's a, I would say, do the inflation that there is some level of, anytime you build something in the past, or if you do it now, it's cheaper than if you do it 10 years from now, if it's needed. But, in either way, it's not a rework piece, it's valves are being added, not valves being removed. And it also is paid for 2016, 2017 versus paid for now, so the bulk of it is...
Is it more complicated to do this now that the tower's built versus when it was being constructed?
Mayor, Councilmember Refkin, no, it's, it's, the, the work is essentially the same as, as some pipe. Currently, it would be pipe removal and insulation of a valve at the time of construction. When you're contracted doing it, it's certainly a lot simpler than having city staff do it, after the fact that, you know, that's certainly noted. But, the level of complexity is not great. I wouldn't say it's significantly more complex to install now. Piping is there, this plant is there for removing pipe. Pipe is set up that you can easily remove small sections versus having to pull it all out, you know, pipe in the plant. So, I wouldn't say it's significantly more complex, no.
When we do this, does it decrease the, the pipe? Are we degrading it and making it worse, is there a chance of leaks, how does this work?
No, Mayor, council member Refkin, so the duct lined pipe, flange duct lined pipe has, flanges, the section where pipe bolts together. So, so sections of pipe can be removed fairly easily by unbuttoned bolts, there's gaskets in there that make everything watertight. Putting it back together can either be a new section of duct lined pipe with flanges, where you can cut the pipe and there's adapters that is commonly used to connect a plain end of pipe that doesn't have flange on it to a flange that would be on this valve. So, no, there's no chance of, of leaks or degradation to the pipe, no.
I've got a question, is this situation common, or is this kind of just happening to Minutrista?
No, Mayor, Councilmember Mortensen, I would say that all, all water plants strive for ways to include, improve their backwash processes. The way that a plant was designed is constantly sought to be improved upon. That's, that's similar, really, to any product that we have, right? You have version one of a OTV or a car, you continue to improve upon. In this case, it's, it's plant operations that are trying to improve upon. So the plants have been working, they've been able to produce their design capacity, and this just gives some improvements upon that.
It hasn't been working at capacity.
Mayor, council member Refkin, so each plant, we went out to the, it's common that you, you, it's known that you'll need a backwash process, right? So the plant, we went out and measured the plant, we were able to run 1,000 gallons per minute through the plant processes without an issue. Depending upon the groundwater quality, those, the duration of your process, the duration of your filter runs can change. We weren't able to pilot these groundwaters, the wells weren't done yet, it was during design. So we didn't really have an expectation of what we would get. I think north, the north plant runs better than the south plant, my understanding. North plant was piloted, we weren't able to pilot the south plant.
Based on water quality?
So, Mayor Whelan, so you would pilot a, a plant to, you would pilot the processes to...
Your wells.
Yeah, so, so the wells were not done, so you would pilot it to identify proper plant processes and gain some knowledge into plant processes, how your plant, how long your filters can run, what kind of chemical feed rates you would need, that, that, those kind of plant operating procedures. In 2016, those wells weren't done. I don't know when the wells came online, the design was chosen to be advanced.
I think they were online before the plants were.
Just before, they were drilled right before.
Why didn't you come back after the plant was finished and make sure that it was designed correctly and running at capacity?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Refkin, we were part of startup processes during those startup procedures. I believe, like I said, I wasn't the design engineer, and so I wasn't a part of this. I believe the plants were running. Well, this is the first that we had been notified of it. We were working up with the city on a variety of other projects, you know, we didn't know about it until the, the letter was received. We're certainly always willing to come out, that I think we, we showed this as soon as we received the letter, we were on the phone with Superintendent Peters, you know, shortly thereafter, and figuring out when we could get into the plant. So I think our intent is always to, to, you know, provide good services to the city and do our best here. We were not, we weren't aware of it.
But when you build a plant, at no point do you just come back, check, make sure it's going okay? You know, it's part of like warranty to make sure what you built, it's operating as it's supposed to?
Mayor, Councilmember Refkin, we, yes, we're always in communication with, not, not constant communication, we're in, we always have ongoing communication with, with people that we work with, with the plant operators. That's, that's primarily what John does, he drives around and works with plant operators. We, yes, we do check in on them during startup, it didn't appear that there was an issue. Some of the primary, what prompted this whole investigation, I suppose, is, is a letter that said that we couldn't get 1,000 gallons per minute through the plant, that it would overflow. So, the first thing we did was go out and see, can we make this plant overflow? And we, we weren't able to, we ran, you know, 1,050 gallons through the plant. You know, we had the wells maxed out, we couldn't get, couldn't get the overflow. So we were kind of, kind of at a loss there, we were trying to do what operators were saying, kind of was deep breath of some of the issues.
In defense of my operator, though, I will say, how close was it to overflow at that point? It was very close.
There was about three inches of, of, of water level between the water and the overflow. So, hydraulically, we can calculate what that three level, three inches actually means or what actually could get through that plant. And by no means did I mean to suggest that, that plant operators weren't doing their job by any means.
The reason we know it overflows, because it did overflow. So, we, we did have that happen. The other issue that we run into, and in their defense too, we had never ran that plant or had the need at that point to run it wide open. So, I mean, that was one of the reasons that this just came to light, you know. Now, with the drought, we ended up having to ramp that up to full speed. We had never been there before, we didn't need that. With the number of houses that were coming in, the amount of water that was being used, we had to ramp it up, and that's when I discovered, not so much that we couldn't get there, but when we were there, it's a quality issue that we're really facing. We were starting to get brownwater complaints again, we were going off flushing hydrants. Back to square one, when I got here 10 years ago, that's what we were doing. So that's, that's when this came to light, when they got, when you got notified. So it wasn't the fact that, you know, in their defense, we never ran it that high to begin with, and when we needed it up that high, is when we found this stuff out.
If I read your technical memorandum here correctly, it sounds like the north plant already has these isolation valves in it, they just have to be automated. So, but they're not in the south plant? Any idea why that would be?
Mayor, council member, I, I do not know that. You're correct, they are, there are manual valves in the north plant. The south plant doesn't have them. The plants are set up in a little different configuration where as soon as water exits the bottom of the filters, it leaves through the, leaves a plant through a high surface pump, pumped out into the distribution system. At the, the north plant, those two filters are connected, that, that finished water line on the suction side of the pumps is connected. It's not at the, at the south plant, there's a little different configuration in each plant. I do not know why they weren't installed at the south plant.
So why, even in the north plant, if they were there, why weren't they connected?
So, Mayor, council member, the valves that are installed are manually operated butterfly valves. So they, they are manually operated, they're not connected to the plant in the sense that they are not automated valves, they're not electrically controlled or pneumatically controlled, which is what is proposed here. You would be able to go out there and turn a lever on a valve and operate them. But you can't do it manually, I, I, like I said, it wasn't a part of the project. A manual valve is cheaper than a pneumatic or an electrically driven valve. So my suspicion is that it went under the cost savings measure.
So, educate me then, if we got manual valves there, but we're not using them mainly because maybe our process at the time or the education that was passed on, why? I guess I don't understand if they're there and they could achieve the savings, although it's a manual process in this case, why would that have not been passed on or why wouldn't we maybe have been using it?
Mayor, council member, like I said, it's not atypical for a plant to shut down, you know, to complete all its backwashes, that's, that's a fairly common occurrence throughout the country. It gives operators a chance to check on other things with the plant as well. And like Superintendent Peters said, I don't think any of these situations were really fully realized until the plants were, you know, pushed to their limits with this last summer. Prior to this, there had been a need to keep one filter online.
Okay.
Could you say that this is a design flaw?
Mayor, Councilmember Mortensen, no, I wouldn't say it's a design flaw. I would say that the plants are designed well and they've been operating for the last five years fairly well. What this does is provide an optimization.
I think we would have expected optimization from the very beginning.
Well, I would have at least expected at some point, SEH to come back and check and make sure it was operating correctly. I mean, you, you built this plant, and at no point did you come back and go, you know, I don't know, it's a warranty per se, but at some point come back, check, make sure it's optimized. And I, I'm just bewildered why we would put these valves on the north one and just got missed on the south one? I mean, whoever recommended it for the north, why weren't they recommended for the south, even if they were manual?
Mayor, Councilmember Refkin, I can't speak to that as to why they weren't added to the south. I will say that, you know, we strive to maintain contact with the city and with its operators and strive to make sure that our plants are operating well into the future. And in this case, the plants have been operating for five years and, and, you know, typically if there's a, an issue, we want to, we want to resolve with that. So we were out there shortly after we received the letter, and that's why we're, we're working to resolve it.
Right, but if you don't check on the finished product, you don't know whether it's not an issue until we find it.
Mayor, council member, there's always a troubleshooting period in a water plant startup. And, and we're out there, in this case, we were out there for plant startup with the, with the contractor, with their manufacturer's reps, and everything was checked off by us and the contractor and the manufacturer's reps to, to, to identify that everything is working properly. Plants adjust, plants change throughout time, as filters age. So, while John is, is, and I are in contact with, with, you know, plant operators all the time, we're not there on a daily basis, we can't see the inner workings of the plant. You know, we, we try to do the best we can in our communication, but...
I mean, at no point over the last five years did you message anyone in Minutrista saying that the, did you check your anthracite level that needs to be at 12? I mean, that wasn't on a sheet we got when the plant went into operation, correct? I find it hard to believe you guys would have missed that for five years.
And that is one thing that both Mike and I, being both novice at this, you know, we were not told. At that time, it was Chris Larson was the, the engineer of record, and that was never translated to us. I mean, until we found from John that, you know, it's something that has to be looked at. You know, we, we did not realize that, so, I mean, that, that is one thing that was missed. You know, in these guy's defense, the engineer of record that was there, I'm, I'm just gonna say it, was not the best at getting back to us on different subjects. So, I mean, I'll throw that out there, we did... So, I mean, I'll throw that out there. We did have, you know, a tough time trying to get warranty work done and stuff through it. We battled. Brian can contest to that too. We had some issues with stuff. So, you know, granted, neither one of you were involved with that, but the engineer record was not, you know, as accommodating as I think he should have been. You know, we got by with what we had at the time, knowing what we knew, what we learned. Mike actually did take the class with John, was very helpful. We did learn a lot on the fly and on the go and stuff. Until last year when we ramped that thing up to full speed is when we found out the issue. So, I mean, I get.
So I think it's fair to say that you can see that we're somewhat disappointed, to put it mildly, and surprised. So moving forward, could I suggest that you check in on an annual basis? And that you review and you go through the plant and you go through with our superintendent as well as our water, water people, operators, on an annual basis so that we know that we are doing everything that we're supposed to be doing. In addition, I do appreciate the information and the proposals that, that are being made. And obviously I think we're gonna have to do those in order to bring both plants up to optimal operations. So we will move forward with that. And I, like I said, I think it needs to be a minimum, an annual check in. So we would appreciate that.
Mayor, absolutely. That's something that we can do. Thanks for having me in. And one final comment, I, I mentioned it to Gary. Gary and John and I have been, been talking. This, this plant troubleshooting is, is what we do, is what John does. We're not, we're not charging for any of this. It's something that we just, we want the plants to work well. We want operations to be happy with what we designed. That's why we were out there to, I made it right as quickly as we knew about it. So we will absolutely start a, a scheduled check in with Superintendent Peters and the plant operators. That's something we'll absolutely institute.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I, I do have one other question. On the back, the last page, it has on here an estimated material cost. You are picking up those costs, I'm assuming, right?
So Mayor Councilmember Morton said, we, because we're not in the original designs, it's not something that we are proposing to pick up. We're proposing to assist the city in coordination and installation. John has offered to go out and help with media installation. We've, I've offered to Superintendent Peters to assist in any coordination, any quote documentation. But I wouldn't call this a design flaw. I would, I would say that this is in addition to the plant.
I have a problem with this.
I think it's clearly a design flaw. It never worked to capacity.
I think you need to go back and ask the powers that be at your company if they're willing to pick this up. The thirty thousand dollar material cost, I know that you were paid very well for your engineering and for your oversight of the project. So I think you need to go back and see what you can do for the city here.
Mayor Councilmembers, we'll continue our discussions with Director Green and Superintendent Peters. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we move on to persons to be heard, which there are none. And so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. I did talk to Ally earlier today and just had her make a few minor tweaks to the minutes only because, if you recall, we started, three of us started and then two of us came in. And so she's just gonna make the.
I'll make it clear.
Yeah, okay. Right.
John had to edit as well.
Okay. So with that, those will be changed. And, but I think with those changes, we can bring it, we can approve them tonight. So with that, consent agenda item approval consists of approvals, approving the special meeting minutes from February second, twenty twenty-two. Approve our special meeting minutes from February third, twenty twenty-two. Approve our work session meeting minutes from February seventh, twenty twenty-two. Approve our city council regular meeting minutes from February seventh, twenty twenty-two. Approve our special meeting minutes from February eighth, twenty twenty-two, and approve our claims. So your motion to approve consent agenda items A through F.
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Refkin is there second? Ms. McGregor made that second. All those in favor signify with a aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. We don't have any public hearings this evening. We're gonna move on to test well location discussion. We have Mr. Greg Johnson with us with WSB. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Just to get an update on the, well, update and then just to talk about the proposal for the test well construction. And as the memo states, the mayor and city staff and members of WSB met with regional managers from the DNR. So we had some people that are hurting pretty tight up that we met with. And the purpose of the meeting was to talk about the, the challenges that communities deal with drawn water in the southwest metro. And, and we were, you know, wanted to discuss the use of the Mount Simon Inglewood. That was the other purpose of the meeting. And I think the meeting went well. It was productive. And the DNR isn't, they stressed the water conservation part too, which we expected, you know, to try to conserve water. At this time, they're not willing to allow us to drill a Mount Simon just by itself as, as a new well. But as a, as an option, what they, pure that we're gonna allow is to trade a new Mount Simon well for an existing Mount Simon well. So I mean, that was, that was productive.
Yeah.
And, and so it's something we're, we're here to present and I get to talk about these additional test wells in, in, you know, the Tunnel City Water Lock and also the Mount Simon Inglewood.
But Greg, just real quick, if you recall, we have well number four, which is in the Mount Simon, and that's the one that's, that keeps collapsing. So that's the one we said to the DNR, you know, would you consider if we cap that one, could we then drill in a different location? So that's kind of, and they, they were very, very open to that. Is my end?
Yes, yes, they, they were too. So we got that on record.
Right.
That's, that's a good part. So if you remember a while, I'm talking maybe three or four meetings back, we, we presented these cross sections of the, of the bedrock formations that go through Minatrista. Andrew Calder's one that is cross section G, which is the lower part of Minatrista. And that was, that was from the Penicola Hydrate, so it was just updated in two thousand twenty-one. They had a nice cross section in there and it showed that the Tunnel City Water Lock and Mount Simon formations, they get deeper as you go east and in particular southeast. And, but with that being said, we're still looking at other sites. So we, you know, we investigated this site for a test well, which we did test well eight. And that well, what we predicted was probably three hundred gallons minute at max out there. And really the limitation at, when you get west or northwest is that the, those aquifer, aquifer formations get jowder. So, so because you don't have the depth, you can't draw out all the aquifer as much too. So that shifted our focus back down to the southeast area. And so we do have a site that we're looking at. That's the site here. It's a seven acre parcel that's north of Highway seven. It's in the Woodland Cove area. I believe this property's been planted for a park, a future park. And this site, we've got the, the water plant, well number six to the west. And then we've got some existing wells to the east. But we're in a location that's far enough away where we shouldn't influence those wells. But of course, we're gonna find out once we do a test well, do the test pumping. So you go to the next site, please. So we did some preliminary investigation as we discussed with the mayor to look at this formation. So the, the one thing is we were highly dependent on looking at existing well logs. Even the DNR that puts together these hydro atlas maps, but they're dependent on that. And part of the challenge is in the, just the water lock formation, there's only twenty water lock formation wells in all Penicola. So there's not, you know, a lot of data. So when they develop these maps, they'll do interpolation, it's kind of a relative certain area. And that's kind of what we did here is we took the well logs from well six, which is a Tunnel City Water Lock well. And then to the east, we have existing well number four, that's a Mount Simon Inglewood well. So if you look at the different aquifer formations, those are the different lines. You go down, so you get the Jordan Sandstone, Tunnel City Water Lock, the deeper Mount Simon Inglewood formation. And if you draw those lines, we've got proposed test well ten that's kind of in between those two wells. We can kind of get a general idea of what we think we're running in color. So if you look at the test well ten, you know, we're predicting we're gonna hit the, the top of the Tunnel City Water Lock rate on four hundred feet. Versus when we did test wall number eight at this site, we ran into it less than two hundred feet. So we got that depth. And then likewise with the Mount Simon, we're probably gonna hit that anywhere from six hundred fifty to seven hundred feet. So that's a deeper formation. The Mount Simon is not drawn out there just because you can play, you can see a dot on well number four. And it's just because well six is not a Mount Simon well, so you can't really interpolate. But we know the Mount Simon is there. So.
Greg, just real quick, a question. So does the depth of the well then, is that pressure that gives us the gallons per minute that we need? Is that why the depth is important?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, so exactly. So when you have a, you know, a hydro water table within the aquifer, it comes with a piezometric head.
Right.
That's in there. So if you more, have more piezometric head, you have more pressure to actually force down into the well. So because you've got a lot of pressure, you can actually get more pumping capacity.
Okay.
To when you're drawing it down. So one of the things that we discussed with city staff and the mayor is, and, and this is kind of what we've done. And actually I've done this before in the city of Savage where we drilled both the Tunnel City Water Lock well on the same site as a Mount Simon well. And the reason you're able to do that is because there's a confiding aquifer. It's called the Hocler Formation. And that's a sheer formation that separates those two. So when you pump those two aquifers right next to each other, they don't influence each other. And that's the advantage, advantage. The, the other advantage of putting both those walls on the same site is that you no longer have this fifteen hundred foot separation where you have to, you know, build a water line to get one well to the other well or to a water treatment plant. So you get that savings as well. So, so you're condensing all your well facilities on one site and potentially a water plant on that same site as well. So, so the proposal we put together is to do two additional test wells, a Tunnel City Water Lock well and a Mount Simon well. And it's supposed to be two, two separate wells. But then what we could possibly do as a, as an alternate, and there is one well driller that can drill a Tunnel City Water Lock well, we could test pump that. And then we could advance that down into the deeper formation with a single well. But it takes a dual or a rotary rig to do that. And there's only one Hocler in the region that can do that.
Who is that?
I'm sorry.
Who is that?
It's Trump Wells.
It's Trump can do that. Okay.
But I'm thinking for the quotation package, we could at least list that as an alternate. It's possible only one bidder is gonna bid that option. But if there's a potential savings to kind of kill two birds with one stone with one, one well, that's something that I'm not considering. So.
Is the Mount Simon under the city hall location?
Yes. Yeah, Mount Simon is here too. The, the challenge is that the Tunnel City Water Lock isn't productive enough here. So if you want to get, get those two wells next to each other, that, that's why this site's attractive down on this location.
And we don't think the DNR is gonna give us permission for two wells in Mount Simon. That's, that's why we're trying to find that on the city one.
Yeah.
How, how productive does the Tunnel City need to be pending what the Mount Simon is? Like, I know five hundred, five hundred. Can, can it go, you know, seventy, thirty? Like what's, is it split fifty fifty or is it different?
Yeah, that's a good question. So Tunnel City Water Lock well is, if you get five hundred, that's good. I think there's more potential of a deeper Mount Simon. So it might be like a grid capacity. I think four is, I'm trying to tell.
It's almost six hundred, it's a little over six hundred at max.
Six hundred or two. So, and you know, it's common to get six, seven, eight hundred or more on a Mount Simon too.
How much do you need? Because we need a thousand, right? So if you get eight hundred from Mount Simon, do you not need as much from the other well?
Possibly, or you have the option of building the plant even bigger with a house of gallons minute. So that's another option. So that would, that would buy you more time until you have to build that nice future water plant. So.
And the park in Woodling Cove is the only spot that you think this is feasible? Because I live in Woodling Cove. People are gonna be mad if there's another water treatment plant in our neighborhood.
Yeah, not, not that particular site.
But they can not have water.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Doesn't have to be on that exact site. But that location is recommended because we know the Tunnel City Water Lock and Mount Simon are at a sufficient depth. So there, the proposal does lay out an option to evaluate a second site. If you have another site you want us to look at, but we recommend staying down in that Woodling Cove kind of that area because we know the formation's gonna be the best down there.
Yeah, but Councilmember Refkin, we have raised that, that WSB is gonna have to sooner rather than later figure out where this site's gonna be and work with them and I. We've, we've mentioned that several times.
Because we, I mean, we got to buy the property, correct?
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't, they haven't planted that area yet. So I don't know what the. I mean, the original intent.
Original plan was for ball fields to be there.
That would be a park, correct. That was gonna be a park, city home park. Yep.
With ball fields.
And with, with a plant, so if you can visualize the one that's by the tower.
I can. There as well.
Size wise, I mean, it might take up half an acre of space.
But ideally, we're talking about being able to bake this one so you can expand it.
Yeah, but, well, and Greg can explain, you're probably only looking at a maximum of two thousand for, that's about the max. You'd wanna go with any treatment plant. And you can build it for a thousand with expansion to two thousand. So, but the size is, isn't gonna be double what the one is that we currently have. It's, it's not gonna double in size.
Yeah, yeah. And we definitely want to allow for that potential to, you know, even if other wells are constructed, you know, a half mile away or something. That would be able to pump to that location too. But yeah, initially, we'd wanna size it for what we're able to get out of those two wells. But then, you know, have that ability to potentially expand too.
We never tested at the three acres park triangle plot, correct? Was that one completely ruled out because of the fault? Or was it just the West Tonka Park one ruled out because of the fault?
We did not. And it's, you know, you could possibly test that. The, the way thing is, that site's not that far, it's not that far east of where this site was. So we don't anticipate that Tunnel City Water Lock are gonna be that much deeper compared to down at the site. We're, we're gonna go down two hundred feet deeper ways in the formation. So.
But their maps, your hydrological maps, would, can you see what the depth is here versus there?
We could interpolate that. The only thing is that those cross sections over on the Hydrate Atlas map was kind of in between. But yeah, we did, we did look at that and it, this kind of jogging my memory now too, is that it might have been maybe fifty feet deeper in that location, but it wasn't like two hundred feet deeper like this location is.
If you, if you're talking the north side of one ten, that spot that the city owns right there, there's a major gas line going through there.
Not that, the one that Three Rivers was gonna let us possibly, they were gonna let us.
Oh, on their property.
Yeah. And then possibly put a permanent well. That's the one, not the gas line.
Up at that house.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Are, is that whole, well, which is not too far from here, but are those two areas, they were only about fifty feet deeper than what we did out here?
That's what I recall. Yeah, there, there's definitely, definitely a big difference in depth. That's why everything's focusing down on the southeast corner of the system. That, that's where the depth is. So that's, that's what we're finding based on the investigation. So.
The other thing is, it was in the master plan, I believe. Okay, it hasn't been planted, but the master plan showed that, that corner as being a park. And so potentially, yes, the waters, water has to pay for the park or park, pay back the park dedication. But at least it's public land that was earmarked for some public use. Most likely more for parks versus, of course, water.
Yes, ballpark.
Yes.
Not another water treatment plant.
The only other option is.
I just wanna make sure we've completely ruled out being able to do this on the city property here that we talked about. Because if Mount Simon's here, we can feasibly drill the Mount Simon well here. And then pending, you know, whether or not the location over there, you can get the Tunnel City Water Lock, I can't say. And then pending, you know, whether or not the location over there, you can get the Tunnel City Water Lock, I can't say that, one, you know, across the street. Does that make more sense for future growth, for adding on, for connecting to other water lines later?
Yeah, I also, you know, if you look at the DNR cross section, that there was a lot of fracture up in this area, too, and if you look at, you know, east and southeast that cross section, the Mount Simon is a lot more consistent. Too, so I think you have two advantages going down with southeast. You've got the consistency of the formation and you've got the depth. And that that'll also help a Mount Simon well, too, to get more production, too, so.
And we can't get two Mount Simon wells, most likely, or at least not now. Maybe in the future we could, but right now we probably can't. Because they do, so the DNR, what they do is they look at, um, all, have we exhausted all options? Basically, is what they are telling us. And and they even, and that's where the St. Bonnie interconnect came also into discussion. And they strongly and highly recommended that we talk with them and and do what we can in that regard as well. So. Is there someplace else that we could move the ballpark?
I mean, that's a good question. Most of it's all plotted out.
Well, yeah, they're they're, um, they're expanding up by the new pool area, the second pool, and they're proposing. I think the idea is that they're kind of trading some area for area. So it's, this isn't as big as what it once originally was going to be, and there's the idea of some more public park near the second clubhouse and pool.
Because I thought that this this park, it, what you were showing us said seven plus acres. I thought the original one was like almost ten acres.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so they've already cut it back because of.
Yeah, because they're putting in the other pool. It's not a clubhouse, it's just a room with showers.
But again, maybe that's something, um, that M and I would, or whoever does the development, would come up with more options. But it wouldn't rule out that they couldn't put ball parks there. I mean, if the city did use this, Greg, in your opinion, estimate, what is it, an acre maybe that would be needed for?
Oh, it'd be less than that, too. Yeah. The other, you always have the option to, you know, like some of your existing wells, too, is that you can have the wells with pitless adapters or submersible pumps, so the only thing you see is a little green thing that sticks out of the ground. To versus building a well else right there and.
Right.
And, uh, but, you know, there might also be the potential to to build a well. I I think at least one of the wells could go inside the water plant.
Okay.
And and then you might just add another submersible pitless unit that's all maybe fifty to seventy-five feet away into the deeper formation, or or maybe the Tunnel City, too. So it might only just be a building and maybe one little green mountain stick and all that you're going to see in the site.
With the option to expand, building and.
With the option to expand, too, right?
Yeah.
Build it on the edge of the trees so it can't go anywhere, or next to a marsh, like, as often as now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, we'd definitely have to look at that, but, you know, even if you had an acre, let's just say, that would still leave six plus acres for ball fields and whatever else. And again, we'll have to make sure that it's located in a manner that it's not in the middle of the six acres, if possible, as far, let's say, south or as far as off to the side that you can, so.
I just did a water plant just recently on ball field, you know, it's, that one's even in the oil field. So we just have to make sure that all the materials weren't going to get impacted by all setting it. You could do that. And and you can, you know, accommodate the architecture or whatever is needed, too, so.
So would it make sense? I mean, are, is there any thought in the future? Being that we have, um, the new water tower, would you ever drill a well next to that into the Mount Simon? Let's just say, ten years from now, whatever, the DNR says, yeah, okay, you can now drill and do another well. Would you put a well there, or could you put a well there that would then help? I mean, what would that do?
You could, yeah, I think that'd definitely be worth investigating, you know, which is, if you get approval from the DNR just to do a stand alone well there, do it, that makes sense. You know, again, when you get west, there was a lot of fracturing in the formations, a lot of uplifts, geological uplift, too, so. But that's something that could be an option if the DNR would allow that in the future.
Okay.
Just a little Mount Simon, you know.
Questions? So Greg, what are you asking? I just have one more. You were talking about bedrock separation here in the location you're recommending. What is the depth of that, do you know? The separation of the bedrock between them, um.
Oh, between the two formations?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, if we look back that side. Yeah, so we've got the, uh, sorry, my glasses aren't here, but we've got, let's see here, I'm getting a little closer here.
Is it like fifty feet or?
It's about, I would say it's about seventy feet.
Okay.
Which is really, it's really the thickness of the ocular formation, so that's about the, it's about the yellow one, the old, the, um.
Blue?
The gray, actually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's that's the ocular, too. So that's like shield confined layer that separates the Mount Simon. In Oakley, that's all it, and then the Tunnel City Water Lock above it. So that's that's a good confinement layer right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Other questions? So, again, then, final question, uh, what is it that you're looking for this evening?
Yeah, so we put together a proposal, you know, similar to what we did eight, nine, but, you know, in that case, we're like your old days, right? We didn't proceed to it, so. You know, in this case, we do a separate Tunnel City Water Lock and Mount Simon. It's, uh, first of all, we want to confirm the Tunnel City Water Lock before we invest into the deeper Mount Simon at that location. So it's similar, I had more confidence that we're going to get the water that we need there, no guarantees, that's the purpose of the test well. And then the same same process, what we do is we check the databases for potential contaminants, make sure it's not buried underground, gas tanks or anything within that well habitat area. Go through that and then put together the quote package. And, uh, you know, send it to probably the same three or four companies. Next time, I, we haven't, we're told that they're not as busy right now, so hopefully we'll get more quotes this time. Yeah, and put off our quotes, come back, council, decide which one we'll order, too, and then we get into the construction phase.
Okay.
So part of our proposals, we, you know, it includes design, bidding, not technically bidding, but going off our quotes and construction phase services.
Okay.
So we're going to make some site drops out here, we're going to look at the pumping data, we're going to be, you know, we're going to analyze the the ographers.
Okay.
The other thing is just to point out there, too, what's in there is that we, um, we also have a, filling out an application for.
The PFA law?
Yeah, not only the the wells, I mean, we could even put a future plant on the, um, app, or it's an application to get on the project party list for for PFA funding.
Right.
And those applications are always due the first Friday in May.
Okay.
Which is May sixth, so it's, I mean, we'd have to jump ahead and submit that. And a lot of times when we do those applications, we're we're just putting concepts and it's in there as placeholders.
Okay.
And it's not, nothing's written in stone, and even when you get on the PPL, it's just to show a hundred project ranks with other projects across the state. There's no commitment to, you know, go through the whole process. And so we recommend doing that, too, to at least get it on the list before May sixth.
Right.
I've got one other question. So well four, we have the problems with, with the caving in or the sand and all that. Are there concerns that this, if we put the Mount Simon where it is, ideally where we want it, in Woodling Cove? Well, is the formation around it the same, where we could run into those same problems? Or is it just a guess and we hope it's not once we drill down?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I I'd say, yeah, there's potential there, too, but, you know, I look at this, it's kind of the the, um, purpose of the test well, too, and, uh, we're going to learn a lot from the test well in terms of water quality. Just how firm that formation is down there, you know, and and I've seen this all the time where you drill a well, you know, and I thought it was a field way, it's it's a totally different formation, too, so. So again, that that test well is going to tell us a lot, too, and, uh, you know, well number four, who knows, it could have been the way it was constructed. Or the city just got unlucky and they got a really bad spot of the formation. So hopefully that was the case.
Tangent, because even six and seven are different, you know, six is at the treatment plant, seven is down just past Creekside. Even those two, um, when they were drilled, I remember when they were forming the cavities down below, seven was a lot, a lot more worth than what six was. So, I mean, and that's just that small area, so, you know, it's it's roll the dice, basically, and you hope for it, you know, for a good spot in the in the ographers, so.
I mean, because they won't be that far apart in theory.
What's that?
They won't be that far apart, four and ten or whatever number this one asked.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be fairly good, it'll be fairly.
Several thousands.
Yeah, it's, it was several thousand feet, I think, you know, looking at it, so. And it is it is farther itself, too, so. And, you know, there's.
That's okay.
You know, I've done other well projects, too, where like if you, if you run into a soft formation where you think it's going to be a concern with a production well, I've done projects where I bid, bid a screen installation as a bid alternate. So at least you got it built into the bid price, and then when the driller gets down to, you know, to that formation, if any cars are really solid formations, you have the option of installing that screen versus coming back and doing a major changeover later, too. So I've done that before, too.
All right, so are we?
I'm done.
I know, no, that's okay. Are we on board with the the location that's being recommended? I know it's supposed to be a park.
There's no other feasible spot, yes? I mean, I don't like it.
Yeah. And then the other question is, um, we want to move forward, and so that's why I asked them to bring this, uh, professional service agreement so that we can move forward, otherwise we're waiting around more more weeks, so. I'm looking for a motion to approve, um, resolution number thirty dash twenty-two, which is approving professional services agreement with WSB to prepare a quote package and provide the construction administration an authorizing solicitation for quotes for drill two test wells in the cell systems, which is city project oh five twenty twenty-two. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Martinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathleen. All those in favor, any further questions, comments? All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. You'll bring, so those bids will come back. What was the date again?
Twenty-first.
The quotes, I mean.
I'll look at the schedule, I'm sorry.
I think, uh, March, the second meeting in March.
Yeah.
Twenty-first.
Quotes due on March fifteenth.
And then.
And then they, you know, we bring it back to the March twenty-first.
Right, okay. And then they're, they'll, they have to, or they will complete the drilling sometime before the end of April, right?
Well, we.
Yeah, April twenty-ninth.
April twenty-ninth, right.
Yeah, so it's it's another aggressive schedule, but, but again, we're.
Trying to be aggressive.
We need to be aggressive.
Yeah, and you'll have your work cut out for you, too, dealing with the, um, MI and and all of that, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Looking forward to successful drills.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Next, we have, um, granting preliminary and final approval of Murphy Highlands, and that is the two lot subdivision on Hardscrabble. David.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor and Council. Richard Murphy has made application for a two lot subdivision of the property located at fifty-eight hundred Hardscrabble Circle. Uh, the property is currently zoned R one, low, medium, single-family residential. Um, historically, there was a home on the site, as you can see from the aerial, but it it was demolished in fall of twenty twenty. The property is three and a half acres in size, and as you can see, located on Lake Minnetonka. The Parks Commission did review this for park dedication requirements, and they are recommending that the city accept the cash in lieu of land uh, for for park dedication purposes. Just to note as well, we've talked a lot the last hour about water, and this property is not served by the city water. They're all, there is no city water service in this area, just FYI. Some concerns have been raised by the neighbors, as you can see with the comments that were submitted. This also was, uh, brought up by a few on our planning commission about the recently reconstructed Hardscrabble Circle and what the, uh, house, the building, the construction of these new houses might might do to that road. Um, so what what we've done, staff, uh, knowing that that was a concern and something the the planning commission talked about, we did add a condition to the approval that, uh, the applicant enter into an escrow, uh, agreement with the city. That would be later to come, uh, that would ensure that securities are are taken, uh, the roads inspected before, during, and after any construction, uh, takes place. So we did add that condition to the, uh, the approval, uh, resolution. That's something that we draft after, um, tonight, um, and work with the applicant on, and then bring it back, of course, to the council because it would be an agreement, bring it back to for council approval and and approval of the applicant as well. The planning commission, uh, voted six one to recommend approval, um, of the two lot subdivision as proposed, uh, with the conditions that are outlined in the resolution. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Any questions of staff? So I was at the planning commission, and, um, they had a number of concerns in the res, the the letter, as you saw in your packet. So the road, um, was a big concern, and I think, um, David has, uh, figured that one out. So, uh, they also were talking about, um, or requested no construction parking on the road, or or no parking on the road. I, it might, you might be able to, um, on a temporary basis, maybe put no construction parking on the road. Uh, there seems to be enough, you know, that might be something we can talk to our police department on. They also talked about construction noise and not having construction on Saturdays, and we really can't do that because our ordinance, um, does allow that, and and we'd have to write a whole new ordinance, so that one. But we can make sure that they do adhere to the construction hours. Um, and then the other issue, um, in question that, um, I know some, uh, one of our commissioners had was, uh, wells. And there is a currently a well on the property. I did check with our engineering firm. And there are no separation, um, requirements for private wells, different than what we know from city wells. So it, they could actually put a well, um, a second well anywhere on the property. There is no separation requirement, so, um, just thought I'd answer those questions. And and then I know the residents wanted us to deny this, and I'm going to ask Mr. Beatty to weigh in here. If a subdivision comes in and it meets all the requirements with no, um, um, variance requests, what are the city's options?
Madam Mayor, Council, the options are to approve the project.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, that's why you have an ordinance that sets forth standards, and if they comply with all the standards, there is no rational basis for denying the request.
All right, thank you. So, just thought I'd clarify those things. Council, any other questions, comments? Okay. Otherwise, uh, we are looking for, um, granting the preliminary and final approval of the Murphy Highlands on Hardscrabble and with the conditions as staff outlined.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Mr. Chamberlain made that motion, and Ms. Refkin seconded that. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Thank you, and now we'll move on to the next one, and this is a concept. This is just a sketch plan for the thirty-two lot subdivision located south of County Road one ten west. Um, and Cardinal Cole, Mr. Abel.
Yeah, thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of council. So as you mentioned, it is a concept sketch plan. So this is the opportunity for the council to provide, uh, as much, uh, feedback as as you can in terms of helping guide the applicant if, in in terms of whether they move forward to the next step of a formal, uh, in this case, it would be a comprehensive plan amendment followed by a preliminary plat, um, but the the next formal application. So it, one, uh, a sketch plan was submitted for a thirty-two lot subdivision for properties that are located generally in the area of sixty-seven oh one, uh, County Road one ten west. We're all obviously familiar with the site, uh, certainly has some history, uh, with it. The properties are currently zoned R two, low, medium density, single-family residential. In our comprehensive plan, we have these properties guided for residential medium, which is at that six to twelve unit per acre threshold. Um, that, of course, was per that.
That, of course, was per that last plan, the Serenity Hill Plan that was, did gain final plat approval. And as if you recall, that approval was still valid when we went through our last comprehensive plan update. So that's hence the reason why we have that higher unit number associated with it. What they're proposing, they're looking at three units per acre, which is obviously well below that planned density in our plan. So as I said, if, if they were to move forward with this proposal, it would require a comprehensive plan amendment, and that should be done prior to a preliminary plat application. As proposed, it does, as they propose their subdivision, it does not meet the lot standards nor, nor the setback requirements for that R two zoning classification. What the applicant, as you can see in their narrative, what their pursuit, what they would be pursuing if they move forward would be a, a, a planned unit development, and they would ask for flexibilities to those standards is, is the way that they're proposing to, to work around that. The Park Commission, in this case, is recommending cash in lieu of land for the, the park dedication requirements associated with the subdivision. The planning commission, this, they had some concerns with the density. It was also noted, there, I think there's a commissioner or two that's obviously a little more seasoned and veteran and mentioned the fact that this is a plan that was very similar to one that was not received very well historically by the neighborhood, ta- taking up the whole site like that. There was a similar plan to, to this that years ago was proposed, and it was noted that that wasn't very well received by, by the neighbors, and then ultimately, if my memory serves me correctly, it was ultimately denied. The, the commission also expressed some concern with, with the element of going to a PUD. There was some question as to what the public benefit would be in this case with allowing flexibility. So again, just something that was raised during the planning commission discussion. So as I said, this is a sketch plan, so the council should provide the applicant with guidance on potential future applications. I, I believe we have them in the audience this evening, and I can stand for any questions.
Council, questions of staff? Comments? Otherwise, we can.
I, I just had one question on the, for the private road. I'm assuming that they maintain the private road, and the public row is a city maintained road?
Correct.
We'll have the applicant come forward and give us a brief rundown of, of your application here, and then we'll have a discussion.
Good evening, my name is Kirkland, I am the development director. First of all, thanks for coming out on night time, like, tonight, I kept thinking, I kept looking at my emails, like, it's going to get canceled. I'm leaving tomorrow for Florida, I know you guys are probably all focused down because I'm going to be on the beach tomorrow, but I just had to get that out there.
We are hardy Minnesotans.
You know, I am, too.
What can I say?
The older I get, I kind of go from hardy to ween, so. But when I was in Palos, you know, my motorcycle, every day, like, I'm telling you, now, it's not at least eighty degrees, you know, I'm in my truck, so. Whenever we do a development, we just, we, we try to blend four different entities. The neighbors are obviously a, a critical component, because if the neighbors aren't happy, then. This is the way I'm dressed, maybe, last night. I, I was going to dress up tonight, but I have my son at a birthday party, so I came straight from Anoka over to here, so.
You're just fine.
There's no lot of driving, so, anyway. So, the neighbor, we try to make them happy, because if the neighbors are happy, that makes your job a lot easier. And we also have to try to satisfy Met Council, the city council, the, the city in general, planning commission, city council, and then the builder group. So having those four entities in mind, we feel that, it, it looks like a really simple concept plan, but there's been a lot of market research, there's been a lot of, you know, talking amongst ourselves within that council. So what, what we came up with is, we just, we want to try to place everything to where it suits everybody as best as possible. And it, it, it's almost impossible, it's like, it's like going somewhere and taking all your kids. There's going to be somebody who wanted to go skiing instead of sledding, but we, we try to make everybody happy. So the builder that we chose is, you know, in, in, in my opinion, probably one of the premier builders in the entire state, that's Charles Cut. And, and I'm sure everybody here is familiar with them, they do a lot of stuff on the lake. I've been really good friends with, with Chuck and Rick and John for, for many years. They're very high-quality builders, very conscientious builders, so I mean, I think that the builder column, we, 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 it's my opinion, we probably get an A plus.
We would probably agree.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I, and I think even with the number of units that are there, and the type of product that's being, the type of product that's being built, we're, we're shooting for a villa-type product. There's not a lot of that in the city. So one of the things that we feel going with, with the PUD is that we're going to offer a product type, and I'm not saying it's known in the city, but it's not as readily available. People are, you know, a lot of people are looking to downsize from a, from a very big house on the lake, and maybe have a, a villa and a maintained community entity that still has access to the lake, but it might have another house in Scottsdale or Florida. So we, we, we think that the product type that we have is going to be the least intrusive product type that we could probably have on that site. So far as the number of units, I mean, Met Council wants us to maintain the minimum of three units an acre, and that's where we're at. So we, we feel that the neighbors should be happy with, with the product type, the quality of the product, and the density. You know, I know it was approved before on there, the Serenity Hills, I believe it had seventy-two units, and they had an impervious surface coverage of, of almost forty-six percent. And we're proposing thirty-two units with an impervious surface coverage of about thirty-three percent. So even though, you know, it, it, it looks like there's a lot of houses on the area, but when you look at the square, or the rectangles there, and you go on, you know, when you look at the rectangles there, that's actually the pad where the house can be built. So that's much larger than the actual house itself could potentially be. And, and so we, again, we're, we're here looking for input, because we value input, obviously, from the city council. We will be back in front of you in a couple of months. But I just want to let you know that we have a lot of time, effort, and thought into this. And I'm not saying that we've hit everything on here, but we believe that we have a really good plan that would benefit the city and attract, you know, a, a, a quality home and people to city Minutrista with a product that really doesn't readily exist right now. I'm, I'm more than open to answering questions that you have.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you state your name and address at the beginning?
I probably did.
Okay, I forgot to mention that.
My name is Kirkland Manley, and you know what, it's kind of exciting, because I've learned more about wells and water treatment plants. I am without a doubt, so we're, we're pretty good there. And I actually live in downtown St. Paul, so. You see me checking Wildsburg once in a while, they just hide it up to the street.
Do you have your exact address?
I do, Twenty-Six.
Thank you.
That's Street West, St. Paul.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I am open to questions.
Council, do we have any questions at this time?
When you say water access, what, is that going to be docks, just one dock, just a path walking to the water?
That's a very tricky question. I spent probably four hours on the phone trying to figure out who the actual authority is, and there's a lot of different people you have to contact. So, what I heard is we can have one dock on there, but one boat on each side. So what we're anticipating, and this is still something that's, that's a point of discussion, is having a beach house, and then having two pontoon boats on there with a computer program to where people could reserve at that time, and the, 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 the two pontoon boats would be owned by the association. So if somebody wanted to go on a, a dinner cruise for two hours on, you know, July sixth, they would just reserve that, and you'd have a couple other people from the neighborhood. Don't have to be, they would have pontoon boat for, you know, two hours. And, and I've, I've heard that it's been done before and works out really well, so. That's kind of our thought right now, is have either a beach house or a wilderness gizem boat. If we have a beach house, you know, obviously it could be used year-round for retirement parties, birthday party, graduation parties. And if it's a gizem boat, obviously, most of the people that are going to be there probably are going to be snowbirds. And so it would probably just be a nice amenity for spring, summer, and early fall.
And the L O C D is the one that would be granting, they, they tell you how, how many docks you can have and how many boats you can have, and it's based on your footage, frontage, foot, frontage, shoreline, frontage.
When we talked about this with Serenity Hills, there was somebody, one of the homeowners, that had an issue with runoff. Do you recall that? Remember that at all? Serenity Hills, one of the neighbors on the, the residents on the lake itself had a pretty severe issue with concerns with runoff. Is that something that would be addressed with this?
Well, they'll, they'll have to satisfy our storm water rules in terms of containing the water on, on the site. I don't know the applicant's willingness, the, you know, previous developers have stated their willingness to go on to other people's property and do improvements, and I, I don't know the willingness of the, this group to do that or not. They would be satisfying our, our requirements on this site. You know, anything above and beyond that is, is up to the applicant.
Okay, I just remember those conversations.
And, and to that point, I mean, to, you know, to a point to where the neighbors are willing to allow us on their property, even if it means grading, you know, they would have to grant us a grading easement. Can get in a bit of trouble if you have great swimming jars back in the future. But we, we, we have done that in the past, where somebody will say, you know, it's like, if we're proposing a development, we're changing the grade there. They'll allow us to come in and sculpt theirs to make the overall project look a little bit better. But one thing that my engineers beat into my head over the years is that any project that we do, the water is more well-managed, once it's done and approved, than in its, in its natural site. So I, I would, I would venture to say that that's the same here. And the fact that we have less harsh surface coverage than what Serenity Hills did, that would also play in favor of us having a, a better water management.
Okay. Other questions or comments? So, I'll make a few. The planning commission was very concerned about the density, and so you're going to, I don't care of what you think or what you say, we are not, I am not going to be in favor of three units per acre. You're going to have to bring that number down to, to two and a half maximum. I'm not in favor of fifty-seven foot wide lots, that is just going to be a nightmare for the city in the future. I'm not in favor of, I'm in, I'm fine with the private roads, that's not an issue for me, anyway. However, I do feel that you will have to somehow connect Halsted with Cardinal Cove so that there's two exits out of this development. When you have that many people here, you're going to need two entrances and two exits somehow. So you'll have to figure that one out. The water issues are going to be an issue, and as you heard tonight, and we are running up against quantity or, in terms of having enough. And so you may, you're going to have to take that into account. There may have to be a time where the city says you can't put more homes online until wells and treatment plants are completed. We're looking at a two, two and a half to three-year timeframe, so that's, I'm telling you upfront. So you, you're on notice that that might happen. I need to see a benefit to the home, to the city versus just this is another option for homes, that's not a benefit enough. We need to see a benefit for the community as a whole, as well as for the neighborhood, and they are not going to like this thirty-two units. So that's one of the things. The, the, the road i- is fine, the private, the other one. You did a great job on the builder, Charles Cut is great, he's done a lot of, they have done a lot of great building here in this community. That's not a problem. Density, we will, this will have to be rezoned, as you know, we will have to do a comp plan amendment. So if we're going to go down in density from the sixty units that we currently have, we might as well go down to where we want it. Just telling you. So, we're going to have to go back to the Met Council, and we're going to have to say this is the density that we want, and we're going to have to work with them, but this thirty-two units is too much, that's what I'm telling you.
So, and I appreciate your, your, your input, so, two point five units an acre is acceptable. I just want to make sure that we're, we're really clear on that if we go back and redo.
I'm telling you two to two and a half.
So, so obviously the developer here, two and a half, but no, we, we, we will obviously agree.
It's on record, so I don't have to repeat myself.
Yeah, we will redo the concept plan to comply to that, to, to a half units an acre, two and a half to two point six units an acre. Any other input on, or questions?
I just agree with the mayor. My two concerns were access, even though the county's talking about the turn lanes, but if we can have access out through Cardinal Cove would help, and the density. I would like that reduced as well as the mayor said. My main concern there is the water issues, and certainly we could, we could hold off on the construction, but I think reducing the density for that area is what I'm in favor of.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask, if, if we get approval on a project that doesn't have services to it, do we just go through our final plat and record it and just, and, and wait, or? What's, what's the process, I've never, I guess I've never dealt with it before.
Neither have we. So here's, here's one more thing before I forget. The stormwater pond will have to be the irrigation system for the, for the development. We are in the process of making some changes to our ordinances, and so upfront, I'm just going to say that's going to have to be a requirement. I guess I would have to say we'd have, you'd have to work with council and with staff to determine how that will be handled. But we can't provide you with water if we can't provide our current residents with water.
Absolutely.
So, and as you heard tonight, we're working on wells and a water treatment plant. It's probably going to, by the time they're up and running, we're looking at two and a half years from now, possibly. So, again, we'll have to work on that. It's not to say you can't build one single house, it's just you may not be able to build all of them.
Madam, one last question. If there's three lots that are actually in the city of Mound, is it possible that Mound has water that can serve this temporarily? And if that's not a possibility, we won't introduce it.
Again, that's something you'd have to talk to Mound on, it might be something you'd have to talk to staff on. We, I don't know that we can answer that tonight, but.
Does that work?
What's that?
How does that work if the subdivision has got some homes in Mound and some in Minutrista with the water?
We'd enter into an agreement, it's not uncommon, that happens. There's areas, they'd be buying water from Mound, we'd enter into an agreement allowing for that connection and, and come up with a agreement, similar to what we were talking about in St. Bonnie, St., you know, we're doing it at a city level, they're just doing it with specific residents, that, that can happen.
We do it with sewer already in St. Bonnie, so, I mean, you see, with the agreement with water instead of sewer, so.
And I think that might be an option on a temporary basis. I don't want to give all of these homes in terms of, but, again, we'd have to work out area charges and connection fees, and, and then eventually the, the water would have to be purchased from Minutrista.
And the only reason I ask is because we have a project in, in that even has served water in the city of Rosemont until, until Met Council provided water, and then, I don't know whether it's a symbol, but they just basically just shut off the water and they opened up the valve from Rosemont.
Right. Yeah, and that, that, that might be an option.
And I have some really nice rendering, some Charles Cut stuff here, but unfortunately, I emailed to Nick, because I thought he was going to be here tonight, and he's not here tonight, so, you guys want to scroll through a couple things here today?
I would, I absolutely would.
I don't think we have an issue with Charles Cut. We know he does, they do.
He's wonderful.
Yeah, they do great, great work. They do good work, and we would look forward to working with, with that builder. If you can come up with all of the other things that we've told you tonight.
I know, I, yeah, I know, we'll, we'll work on it. Is there a second concept plan review, or basically just, just incorporate what you asked and go to a preliminary plat?
It's entirely up to you. If you'd like to do it again, you certainly are open and welcome to that, but it's up to you.
As much as I'd love to see what you guys, I think we'll probably just comply with what you asked us to do, and maybe just go straight to the preliminary plat.
Yeah, it would be a comprehensive plan, and there is a neighborhood meeting required as well. So prior to that, you'd hold a neighborhood meeting, and then, then you could submit.
Speaking of Charles Cut, he's like really the work behind Charles Cut.
Oh, hi.
We, we knew, we knew you were in the audience, so we just had to say good things about you.
Yeah, it's sounding like Charles Cut, fifty-four, seventeen, seven, about right.
The only thing that I just wanted to quick mention, if we're going to irrigate out of the pond, we're going to have to build a well.
Yes, correct.
And so we'll get our own well permit.
Correct.
To feed that water.
Yes, and it'll be a, a quotes unquotes residential well, obviously, nowhere near, nowhere near as deep as what we were talking, and you don't need five hundred gallons a minute either, so, no.
We will usually do about a fifty gallon of well, just to feed it and take it out.
Right.
Because if, if it doesn't rain, we don't have irrigation.
No, we understand that, and I'm glad you understand that, too, so, yeah, yeah.
There wasn't something against us having a well or else.
For irrigation, no, not a problem. Okay. All right.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have accept the resignation of Police Officer Nikki Meyer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Officer Meyer submitted her.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Officer Myrie submitted her letter of resignation, uh, effective March second to assert, to pursue a different career path. Typically, employee resignations are on consent agenda. However, not only will we begin the recruitment process to fill that vacancy, we're also asking for authorization to advertise for the additional police officer, um, position approved in twenty twenty-two budget process. The additional officer position was anticipated to start about halfway through the year. However, it would be administratively more efficient and cost effective to advertise for the two positions at once. Um, it is still likely that both positions won't be filled until closer to summer as officer pre-employment processes take longer than other positions. So, um, this budget impact would likely be offset by the savings from the, um, Nikki's opening position. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And obviously, we thank Nikki for her nearly two years of service and wish her the best of luck.
Thank you. I'm always sad to see any of our officers leave, but unfortunately, this is also a female officer and we don't have any of those other than Nikki. So, um, yeah, that's too bad. Um, questions? So I think it's a good thing if we advertise for both and just.
Right.
Because I know our police, um, officers are in need, definitely in need of, of some help here. So, um, you need a resolution then to advertise or just kind of a direction, I think?
If you want to just accept the resignation of Nikki and then authorize the advertisement.
Okay. So, um, so a motion then to accept the resignation of Officer Nikki Myrie, um, effective March second and approve city staff to seek and hire two new police officers.
So moved.
Mr. Chumperland made that motion and Ms. Refkin seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And next is approval of the city administrator employment agreement with Jasper Krugel.
Me again, we're here.
Yeah.
Um, as we all know, the city administrator position has been vacant following the retirement of Mike Peroni in December. The position was advertised from November to January, and the council selected six semifinalists, which been, which went, which were then narrowed down to three candidates selected for a final round of interviews. The council directed staff to move forward with an employment agreement, uh, with the finalist Jasper Krugel. You all received the agreement on, when did I send it? Monday, as we did not have enough time to get it reviewed by our legal team prior to the packet. Um, below were the terms and conditions of employment. If you want me to go through those, I can do so, but I imagine you all read through them. Um, and so we expect Jasper to have his first day on April eleventh, and I will likely be planning some sort of meet and greet. I'm not sure if before he starts, after he starts, but I plan to contact him tomorrow and kind of work on next steps of employment. So with that, I can answer any questions.
All right. We were all part of the process, so I think we're all well aware. Um, so is there then, um, a motion to approve the city administrator employment agreement with Jasper Krugel?
So moved.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Mortensen. And Ms. McGregor seconded that. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. Looking forward to having him on board. So we'll move on to administrative items. Uh, Finance Director, you have a report?
Yeah, I was going to just give an update on some of the upcoming work session items. Um, obviously, uh, water will probably be a part of the upcoming work sessions. Uh, one of the items that, um, is on the list is to discuss the tiered wa- tiered wa- water rate structure. So we'll, we'll have something for that most likely at the next meeting, um, as well as potentially, um, some other water items, maybe even related, I suppose, to, uh, the recommendations that were brought forward, um, tonight, you know, maybe further discussion on that. Because even myself, I'd like to give a little more context as far as, um, you know, just F E H and Miles Jensen wasn't able to be here tonight. And W S B, they had some oversight in the project. I think there's just multiple layers to the onion that we'd want to talk about. And I think those, those improvements are really important to get done and to just pound our fist and say, you know, you got to pay for them. I, I've just seen enough examples over the years. There may need to be some compromise or.
We can talk about that at the work session, sure.
But I think there's just, um, some things that, um, yeah, we can talk about the work session.
Yeah.
It's getting late enough tonight. Um, ARPA funds, uh, allocation and reporting, that's one of the items. So our first reporting deadline is April thirtieth. I don't think we have to file a final report or have decided. We can do zero reports for a while until, but I think we're starting to get, um, you know, are we going to use the cable funds? Are we going to use the ARPA funds on the wells, you know, P F A loans? So I think a lot of that stuff is just a general topic. We should sort of see what, what's up, what's money we want to pull from and or apply for loans or bonding or, or talk about that overall picture. Um, that might be the, the next work session, maybe the second one in March. Um, I know Kevin Nguyen, um, reached out to me, our, our county assessor, as far as, um, uh, some areas of the city, the values are going up extremely for twenty twenty-two valuation for twenty twenty-three taxes. So I think he was willing to come and, and talk and, uh, uh, give some information on that because those, that was, that information will be getting out to our residents in spring here. And, um, but there's some areas, he said, you know, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent increases.
You say where?
Um, I haven't gotten all that far yet. I think they're still finalizing some, but he said it's, it's going to be an eye opener based on, you know, they're, they do on, on arms length sales and stuff and just the way the, the market's been in, in sales. So I figured he'll be the better one to explain that. Um, so.
So he's coming when?
Um, right now I've got him slated to the work session and.
Oh, work session?
A work session. I don't, would you, would you prefer?
Well, you might as well, he should come in March because I think the valuation notices go out in March.
Yep, yeah, so.
We want to get ahead of the game. We need to bring him in March.
Yeah, right now I've got him coming to the twenty-first. I guess I could try to swap and have him come on the seventh or I don't know.
Want to have him come on the seventh so we at least have, know what's going on.
Okay. Let me check with Kevin and see, um, if we can, yeah, tend to, I had him coming to the twenty-first, but yeah, maybe earlier is better. Um.
I, I just know evaluations go out in March, and so if people start getting their evaluations and they're seeing this,
Yeah, I can, yeah.
at least we would have some heads up on it.
Okay. Let me, let me see what I can do.
Yes, seeing the people whose home values are going up, won't be surprised that they're going up.
I mean, some of them should know from if they've talked to some of their neighbors and stuff or did a little, I mean, so it, it shouldn't be a complete shock if they're in tune to the market, but if they haven't been paying attention, it might be, you know.
All right.
Um, and then, uh, lastly, I think we brought this up, the, uh, replacing a lot of the wa- or a decent amount of water meters we'll probably bring to one of the upcoming work sessions too, just to, uh, get that in front of the council, so.
Okay.
But that's all I have.
All right.
Um, question on the work sessions. Do we have the gun range, um, conversation aligned for work session coming up?
We were kind of waiting for, um, Chief Falls to get back. He, he was kind of spearheading that, so. And I think, unfortunately, Lieutenant Squires has enough on his plate right now with one officer.
Yeah, I, and Madam Mayor, members of council, we're also waiting on, uh, the crime fund as well. Um, so the crime fund's got to have some dialogue to about their portion that they might be able to help us out with in building the range, so. I know, and Chief gets back, he's going to talk to the crime fund and maybe we can look at fundraising and whatnot, so.
Okay. And Gary?
Yeah, Madam, I was not on the list, but I will give you an update on the West Tower. Um, power is at the tower. Everything is operational. Uh, we will be starting to fill it tomorrow.
Okay.
So we do, uh, what, once it is full, we can, uh, do our B A T testing. We can also get the SCADA system synchronized. Uh, with that, there has to be water in the tower to get the, um, the heights and the stuff calibrated. So, um, by early next week, um, we should be able to put it online.
All right. Good job. Good. Good to hear. All right.
Did I get someone for the planning?
No.
I don't think I did at their last meeting.
We have a planning commission meeting?
We do have one.
All right.
It should be me, but I unfortunately cannot make this month, but put me on for the next one whenever it is, so.
Okay.
What's the date on that?
The twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
It's, uh, the twenty eighth of February, right?
Um, one minute. And we don't have a park commission meeting?
No.
Okay. And in March, probably not either?
Uh, probably not.
Okay.
I can do it.
Okay. Pam is on?
Good. Thank you.
And then, um, we had talked last fall about doing a city tour with the park commission and, um, city council and stuff. And so I, I'd still like to keep that in mind, not until the spring or, or maybe May or somewhere when the weather is nice.
And what Jasper can go with?
Yeah, yeah. Right, exactly. So maybe sometime in May. Keep that in mind. All right. Anything else from staff, ways, um, council? Start with Pam.
Uh, just the city administrator position interviews.
I near Sarah Creek last week, uh, just a couple of items. We, commission approved our twenty twenty-one accomplishments to send it on to Bowser. Uh, we deferred the twenty twenty-two proposed work. Um, there was info that came out of the TAC meeting, which had been the week previous, so that's being incorporated and we'll discuss that next month.
Okay, good.
Um, Gillespie Center, I facilitated a couple of meetings for them, and we have a plan. Uh, things are moving forward, I think, in a very positive fashion as far as events, as far as the, the reality of making up the money that they need to make up. And, um, we're going to continue to have these meetings, uh, try a membership drive.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't have anything. Right. Um, so all of us attended multiple, um, special meetings for the interviews, um, and staff. It was extra time, so I'm glad that that's done with. But, um, and then, um, I'll be putting out a mayor's message next, either this week or the beginning of next week, just kind of letting everybody know particularly about the broadband and then some other things going on. Uh, the other thing, um, I want to, um, just kind of make a, a shout out. We are in need of more reserve officers, so if anybody out there, you're talking to your neighbor, they're interested in helping, serving, we really could use reserve officers. So, um, and we'll put something out in our newsletter, maybe even on our Facebook page. I know the, um, police department will do that as well, but, um, I think we should, um, as, you know, the more, the more information out there, the better. The other thing is, we have been talking, we've talked about, um, doing a town hall open meeting for our water infrastructure. And so I'm, was wondering if there's any kind of dates that are more preferred. I think we should wait until, um, Mr. Krugel is on board. Um, having said that, so we'd probably be, and I'd like to do it before the watering season starts. So we're probably looking at somewhere around the end of April.
Madam Mayor, you're, this is the one you want someone from the U to come, right?
Possibly.
We are filling that position right now.
Okay.
So I will have to reach out to other resources.
Okay.
To be there.
All right.
Um, same with the irrigation truck at Trista Days. They're feeling it's all one position.
Okay.
So.
But even if we can't, we still have to, I think we still need to move forward with this.
Yep.
Um, meeting.
Should we wait until we know about this round of wells?
Yeah.
Just to have Morgan Cove?
I think the mayor's thinking maybe.
Maybe that, well, early May then, because, um, and if, because once we get into the watering, and see, I, we really need to do this prior to the watering season. So that's, that's what I'm kind of looking at.
The watering season depends on the weather, so the watering season in theory can start in April.
Hope on a wet spring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very wet, but I mean.
So we'll be looking at, um, we'll say early May at the latest.
And you want to, um, before, like, in conjunction with the work session on a separate night?
What's your take? I, I'm thinking it's going to have to be an hour and a half at least for this open house meeting.
Oh, then something definitely different.
Than a separate night.
Yeah.
Okay. And?
So look at some dates and, um, let's put it on our calendars. And then, um.
Please not a Wednesday.
Okay, no Wednesday. All right.
I got that up here.
All right. Um, and then I also attended the, um, and as did, um, Lieutenant Squires, we attended the, uh, Drug Task Force Annual Lunch, Luncheon. And, uh, they, they, um, presented us with the information. So we, um, have participated for the last three or four years, I believe, in the Drug Task Force. And, um, so in twenty twenty, here's, here's what they did. They confiscated or, um, yeah, confiscated a hundred and twelve pounds of cocaine, a hundred and four and a half pounds of meth, methamphetamine, a hundred and fifty-three pounds of high-grade marijuana, thirteen point two pounds of heroin, five point seven pounds of marijuana wax, whichever that is, I don't know, and a hundred and twenty, ninety-six pounds of marijuana edibles, four thousand four hundred and seventy-nine THC cartridges, and for a total of a round of three point eight million dollars of drugs that they took off the streets.
And that was last year?
That was in twenty twenty. Those are the stats for twenty twenty. They didn't have twenty-one stats yet. And then they did, they, um, did a hundred and ten search warrants, fifty-five arrests, and found thirty-one illegal guns. So this is what we're participating in. This is what we are helping to make our community safer and our kids and everybody safer. So just thought I'd share that. It was interesting. Other than that, I don't have anything. With that, we can be adjourned. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, and thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. We are adjourned. Thank you.